Well, welcome to the June 7, 2018 Business Meeting. I'd like to call to order a meeting and have our County Administrator, Don Krupp, please take the role.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning. We are back from our budget deliberations hiatus and back to our regular schedule. We are joined this morning by Mr. Stephen Madcor, County Council, who's here to give us the most astute of legal advice, of course, and then Clerk to the Board, Mary Rathke. Sir, I'll start with Commissioner Humberson.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, first up, we have a presentation, I usually do this, acknowledging the Housing Authority of Clackamas County's 80th birthday, and I believe you have been here the whole time.
You know, I was really prepared for that statement. And so, and yes, you know, I was here, I voted on the first one, and it just feels like I've been here that long.
What is the actual anniversary date?
So, the actual anniversary date, well, I'll tell you what, let me go through this, and I'm going to answer that question as part of this, as part of this quick little presentation. Most, first of all, I'll introduce myself, I'm Chuck Robbins, I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. Thank you very much for letting me be here today. This is a pretty important, you know, I think momentous, you know, time in the Housing Authority's history. One thing I would like to do, though, is I would like to, to recognize Paul Reynolds. He is the resident commissioner that usually sits on this board when this board is sitting as the Housing Authority Commission, and so I asked him to be here. So, I've, you know, luckily, it looks like I've got a little time, I'm going to share a little bit of what's been going on. I mean, to start out, we, you know, we didn't really know that we had a birthday coming up. It came about accidentally. I was trying to figure out what funds were used to build the administrative offices of the Housing Authority, and nobody knew. So I says, "Well, where would I find out?" And they gave me this really dusty box. When I opened it up, it was filled with the original resolutions, you know, from the start of the Housing Authority. So as I was going through that, I found Resolution Number 1, and I want to take the opportunity to read this, I think that this is interesting. "Be it resolved that the County Court of Clackamas County, Oregon hereby determines, finds and declares in pursuance of the Housing Authority laws of the State of Oregon that (1) insanitary and unsafe inhabited dwelling accommodations exist in the County of Clackamas, Oregon; (2) there is a shortage of safe and sanitary dwelling accommodations in the County of Clackamas, Oregon, available to persons of low income at rentals they can afford; and (3) there is need for Housing Authority in the County of Clackamas, State of Oregon." That occurred, and here's the answer to that question, May 4, 1938. We're the first housing authority in the State of Oregon, and very proud of that. You know, jump ahead, 2018, and the cynic may say, "Well, wow, looks like the problems are still the same, what have you accomplished?" And, and I, and I say, you know, "Think what Clackamas County would have looked like if the Housing Authority wasn't here." So while you think about that, we have a little video that I'm going to ask if you could tee up. The 80th anniversary of the Housing Authority, I think, is an important event in Clackamas County for a number of reasons. I think maybe number one is it shows the county's commitment for 80 years to ensuring that our lowest-income families, residents, have a place to live.
The Housing Authority is important because we house the most vulnerable residents of Clackamas County. We provide housing that we own as the Housing Authority, and we also run a voucher program which allows residents to go out and find housing on the private market.
When we're in a time where a living wage, it can't pay your rent, it's really important to have affordable housing.
Right now in Clackamas County, we have roughly 140,000 households. Of that, over 23,000 households spend more than 50% of their income on housing, and that's why we care. These are the people that, you know, are working at Starbucks, that are, that, you know, that work at Lowe's, they're your neighbors, they're the people that, that provide the economic engine for the growth of our county, and they can't afford to live here.
I am with AmeriCorps, I have a service site at PCC Silvania, and I'm the Learning Garden Coordinator. I've lived in housing for about two years, and before that, I was a PCC student, and when my rent went up $300, I endured a crisis and actually had to quit school, so I was very grateful that housing was in my option at the time.
We have housing parks, generally it's 100 units on about 20 acres. That is a fairly large community, and in order to engage that community, there are a lot of activities we get involved in. You know, some of them are activities that we've designed ourselves, a number of them are activities that have been designed by the residents. The whole idea is to get people out of their houses, get them to meet their neighbors, and at the same time, interact with our Resident Services Coordinator so that this individual can find out, "What kind of services do you need?"
There's a CASA savings program that helps people save for college and for a home to move out of housing, that's a great matching program. The way I became connected to these programs is because we have a Resident Services Coordinator, and she literally came to my house, and knocked on my door, and asked me if I was interested in the program, and she didn't take no for an answer. I would never have gone to school had it not been for the program. I get my associate's degree and my bachelor's degree, it helped me find confidence, it's helped me find upward mobility, I'm so excited about the future because of the opportunity I received.
I was so thankful, yeah, that the Clackamas County was able to put me in a program that got me my CNA license. Olivia, she's 10, my daughter, she qualifies to have some extracurricular activities during the summertime that they provide or sponsor. We have this wonderful learning garden, and that's been a really great thing for me and my family. It helps, like, reduce my stress, even though I'm in charge of a garden at, at, at work.
The Clackamas County Housing Authority, which is actually the oldest housing authority in the, in the state, is headed towards its 80th birthday, and also a complete remapping of what it looks like. So it's not going to be a concentration on public housing, that's been the traditional, you know, 30% or lower down to zero-income population, you know, they're going to be spreading their portfolio in their expansion, and they're going to be looking at, you know, 0 to 30, that definitely is a, is a population that we have to focus on, but then also, you know, the, the Housing Authority is going to be getting to more mixed-income development.
AmeriCorps, it's not a career, the stipend is, not a livable stipend at the moment. Receiving benefits are extremely important because doing the service work, knowing that I'm giving back, and, and hopefully making ripples of change, that the low-paying stipend is doable with the benefits I do receive.
I think a good day is one where I feel really connected to that core mission of the Housing Authority, not only to the people we're helping today, but that all of the work we're doing to plan and revitalize our housing is going to serve residents for years to come.
Well, I think that that helps kind of answer that question, what would Clackamas County have looked like if the Housing Authority wasn't here for 80 years? We wouldn't have something like that. We started with nothing. Obviously, we're the first housing authority. Within the first couple of years, we had built two 100-unit housing parks, Clackamas Heights in Oregon City, 100 units was the first public housing in the state, right after that, we built 100 units in, at Hillside. Since then, that has grown. You know, we now have 545 public housing throughout the county, we've got an additional 400 affordable housing units owned and operated by the county, or the Housing Authority, with another 200 getting ready to be built. On top of that, we have over 1,600 vouchers. When you add that up, over these 80 years, thousands of families have been provided housing in Clackamas County that they wouldn't have had, you know, the opportunity to live in if we weren't here. So, there is, I think that the, the timing for all of this is great for a number of reasons. You know, one of them is, as Mr. Krupp mentioned, the budget. When I look at, you know, where we're headed, you know, we're really building on what, what occurred, you know, in the past. We have these, these great opportunities for investment, and, you know, like that first board that said, "We're going to create a Housing Authority," we have a board in front of us now that has, you know, has presented us with an equal challenge. They said, you know, "It's not enough, you know, to just live on what we have now, we want to see 2,000 new units by 2020, we want to see 1,000 more units, you know, available to people at 60% or lower that the Housing Authority is going to own and operate." That's great, we love the goal, but more important, I think, is you stepped up and said, "For the first time that I can remember," you know, the Board of County Commissioners says, "This is a priority, and we're going to follow up that goal and that request with general fund dollars to be used to develop affordable housing in Clackamas County." That is momentous. I mean, we're, we're living in the right time if you're interested in housing. So this is, you know, I could go on, there's a lot to talk about, I'm very proud, even though I've only been the Housing Authority Director for five years, you know, it has been a wonderful opportunity. So, I do have one ask. 80 years, it's an accomplishment, and I'd like to take the opportunity to invite you to our birthday party. On June 27, and I'd like to invite everyone to our birthday party. On June 27, at 11 o'clock at Hillside Manor in Milwaukee, we're going to celebrate, we're going to celebrate the past, we're also going to celebrate the future, because at that time, we're also going to kick off the new redevelopment plans that we have for Hillside Park and for the rest of the Housing Authority. So I hope we can see you there. If you, you should get an eVite if you, if you don't already, and if not, I will make sure that, that whoever didn't send you the eVite is uninvited. So, so we'll make sure that you're all there. Thank you very much for listening to me, and thank you for, for all of your leadership on this.
Well, thank you. I want to, you mentioned the other day, and I just wanted to confirm, you know, Metro is talking about a housing bond measure, and that Clackamas County is ready, we have 48 acres, I believe, that we're ready to redevelop, and this money would make a huge dent in our project.
And, and, and that is mostly correct. I mean, we, we have it available, we need to do some plans before we are, we're actually ready, but when you go to these meetings and you listen to the other counties, they're all concerned about where they're going to be building these units. We're not that concerned about where. We've got, as I said, you know, you know, 20 acres, almost 23 acres in, in Oregon City, we've got another 20 acres in Milwaukee, we know we're going to build it, and one of the things that we're going to do is, is plan what that development looks like. What we, you know, what we want is, I think as Rich mentioned in the video, we're not, you know, gone are the days where you're building, you know, you know, public housing projects. What we want to build is a mixed-income community where our lowest-income live with, you know, with everybody else, and it's just, you know, it's, it's a community of different housing types, of parks, of, of economic opportunities. It's, again, you can see, I, I'm excited, this is, this is exciting time, you know, get involved in some of those designs, that's probably the most fun you'll ever have, is sitting down and designing what a new community could look like.
You mean it's more fun than budgeting?
Oh, barely, just barely.
All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it. Happy birthday.
And just for the record, no, I wasn't here for the first one.
No, only, yeah, half of it. All right, so the next item on the agenda is citizen communication, and I don't seem to have anybody, just kidding, let's pull.
Good morning.
Morning.
If my voice is hoarse, it's because I've been talking to a lot of people lately, so I apologize. Yesterday, there, you know, I want to just say, "Good job, Chuck." When he took over five years ago, things were not good, and I'm, I'm just pleased that he's here regularly, and, and I don't know the man, I'm not involved in the Housing Authority, but I haven't seen the fiascos that we were seeing in the past, so that means he's doing a good job. Yesterday, I heard some news that just shocked me, and most of you have probably heard that, that the governor has can't, I mean, the Secretary of State, Thomas Richardson, has cancer, and I happened to be in Salem, and he's a really good man, he's doing a really good job, and I've seen him vilified for some of the audits he's done that have exposed the shortcomings and the waste and the downside of human services, and I just wish him well. He was a helicopter pilot in Vietnam, doing rescues, and so I think he probably could have said something a week or two ago, but he waited till D-Day to announce that, and I thought about that. That's the kind of guy he is, so I, I wish him well, and I know you folks are thinking about him. Obviously, I'm back about transportation issues, won't get long-winded about tolling, except I'm sure Paul will keep us informed, he's doing a great job. We need a unified voice from all of you, we really do, we really do. The citizens need all of you to engage on this issue, the tolling, and what we're going to do about our road capacity and congestion, because it's going to kill the quality of our life, and more and more and more of us will end up needing housing assistance rather than being self-sustaining. So, we've got a real crisis going on, and last week, Commissioner Humberson mentioned that I should talk to the state, and I, and I have, and I encourage folks to. Go to value pricing, just search for that, what they're doing, I don't think there's any evidence that it's really value pricing, and you can imagine the calls for action I've been receiving, so I'm not in charge of any group, I'm not speaking officially for anyone, but I think I bring a message that probably resonates with 70% of the people that live in Clackamas County on this issue. I mean, this is not being handled well. And I believe that ODOT, it's, I mean, that the legislature's directive isn't really being followed, when, when we get into all these different ways, we're going to study value pricing, but, but we leave out, and we set aside, and we make increasing capacity a minor issue. So, please, take action. You can bet that, that there's enough folks out there right now that are fired up, and business owners, that you're going to see some action from the citizens. And I'll just conclude by saying, I hope you all take a look at a, at a Facebook page that I'm involved in, it's been around for several months, and it's about the transportation issues. If you search online, online, search Facebook, it's a Vehicle Transportation Alliance, and there'll be more to come there. So, again, I'm, I know I'm repeating myself over and over, but the problem and the angst is growing every day. This isn't about my comfort level, it's about the citizens' comfort level, and I just see another one of those things where all of a sudden, government loses trust after you guys are working to gain it. And I know you're not in control of this, so I hope those watching understand that the county only can say and do so much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and appreciate any comments. I want to mention that we were denied the grant from the federal government on 205. One of the issues is matching, you know, if the state doesn't step up and help us, the federal government isn't so excited about it either, so we did not get that grant. What was that grant called?
InfraBuild or Tiger.
Infra?
Tiger Grant.
Yeah.
Yes, Ken.
I was, I was going to comment on that. The other thing, in just in reading the political tea leaves, if you will, to be real candid with you, I, I, it's my personal opinion that the state has essentially decided there will be tolling. The question is going to be how and where, to be honest with you. Commissioner Savis is working pretty hard to, to see that it's done as, as fairly as possible, given our circumstances as a county, and I can tell you that this board's been supportive of his efforts as our, kind of our transportation expert. But my reading of the, of the political tea leaves is, is this isn't a matter of if, or whether or not they're going to toll. In my opinion, I think they've already decided they're going to do that, it's just going to try to figure out how, when, and where.
And how much?
And I, I don't, I don't want people to be misled to think that somehow it isn't going to happen, because if the road's going to get improved, I think that's what they're going to do.
And you just nailed it with your last statement, sir, thank you. If the roads are going to get improved, if we're going to build something and follow the protocol that's been in place for 80 years, I'll use that number, let's build something and pay for it with tolling, but I, obviously, that, that's not the perception of where we're heading, and some of it is, is, you know, hot air and speculation, but, but at the same time, none of us gets a warm, fuzzy feeling when Metro puts out a letter that says, "Well, let's toll, but not really put increased capacity on 205." And we lost that grant because 205 got dropped out of the transportation bill. So, not here to complain or yell at anyone, but we're in a transportation crisis, and they're going to dump all this traffic onto the side streets, that's one thing that's for sure. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, Sonia.
Yeah, I just want to say, I agree with you, Commissioner Humberson, that politically and for all intents and purposes, it looks like tolling will happen, but it hasn't been, as the lawyer in me must state, it hasn't been approved by the legislature, signed by the governor, these plans have not been finalized, and that, therefore, citizen input at every step of the way is very important. So don't think, you know, trust in government is something that we promote, something that we value, so please continue to have input, talk to your legislators, there's a commission on transportation at the state that's making a lot of decisions, and quite frankly, I was at the 205 widening open house last night, and just talking to ODOT staff, they're very informed, they're really working hard on this, and even connecting with ODOT directly through the website, really important avenues for input.
Yeah, I think the last time ODOT came and talked to us, I felt so much better than I ever felt, but they're just a department that has to be funded by somebody else.
Yep.
Anyway, you have any, you know, I think I'm, I thought, flicked my light on, I forgot.
Why, anyway? Yeah, so I just wanted to say that, two dates to look out for, for those watching, is June 20, the Board of County Commissioners will be, that's a Wednesday, the Board of County Commissioners will be, have a work session on tolling to basically align our message for the June 25 meeting, which is the final Advisory Committee meeting for tolling in Portland. So, we'll have our message honed down by then, and I do want to recognize that ODOT has been very, very aggressive, positively accommodating, and getting out the public involvement piece, they've done a great job. I attended the same meeting Commissioner Fisher did at, in West Lynn, the night before, I wasn't able to attend last night, I was in a library meeting, but they, they did a very good job, and I believe next Wednesday, in Old Grove, there's going to be a meeting on tolling, I believe, I believe it's next Wednesday, and I get more specifics on that, that's going to be held by Thelma's group, Thelma Haggamiller's group, CIA, so they're, and I think co-hosted by the CPOs in that area. So, more to come on that. I do say that, you know, really, at the end of the day, if people want to see I-205 built, it's either going to come from gas tax money, or it's going to come from tolling, or some other revenue source, so we just going to need to pick our poison, I guess, and figure out.
It's a good way to phrase it.
Which, which of those evils that we want to further endure in order to build this project, as well as other projects in the, in the whole region, so more to come.
I just don't think we should sit here and even in any way, shape, or form, mislead the public about the idea that somehow the federal government's going to come in and rescue us and not have to pay locally. We're going to have to pay, and, if it's going to happen, and it's disingenuous to suggest otherwise.
Yep, that's right.
All right, well, thank you very much, and we're going to move on to a public hearing, we're going to recess as the Board of Commissioners and convene as Service District 1 for the next item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing to consider a resolution for a Clackamas County Service District Number 1 supplemental budget greater than 10% for fiscal year 2017, 2018. We have Mr. Doug Law from Water and Environment Services here to explain this one to the board. I will say, this is just sort of an editorial comment, even though we're talking about a fairly large number here in terms of the supplemental budget, we're actually not proposing to spend more money.
That is the, that is the correct point, that is exactly right. Good morning, Commissioners, and just when you thought you were done with budget, we have one more little budget thing up your, up our sleeves for you. This is a supplemental budget for Clackamas County Service District Number 1's current year budget. It's really, the goal here is to recognize that we had some slightly higher beginning fund balances this year, we've underspent on the, on the capital and the O&amp;M side, so we're going to have larger ending fund balances that we need to carry forward into the West 190 organization that we're creating for next year. As you know, we've been deeply involved in this, and we're getting to the end of that process, and this is one of the last steps to make sure that we have sufficient budget authority to transfer all of Service District 1's financial assets into West as of July 1. So that's the goal here. We are requesting no new expenditures, we will be within our budgets otherwise, so nothing to report there, and it just gives us the ability to create sufficient budget authority to make these transfers, and that's all there really is to it, it's a mechanical process, if you will.
All right, any questions?
Just one.
Yes.
Or just a comment, I love hearing the word "underspent." That's a good word, thank you.
It is a good word.
All right, to, we'll open that public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution for Clackamas County Service District Number 1 supplemental budget greater than 10% for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Second.
It's moved the second that we approve a resolution for Clackamas County Service District Number 1 supplemental budget greater than 10% for fiscal year 2017, 2018. District Number One supplemental budget greater than 10% for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries. The board will now adjourn as Service District Number One and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you very much. Sorry to put you through that. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a professional services agreement number 8345, amendment number 21, with Mount Hood Home Care Services to provide Oregon Project Independence in-home care for Clackamas County residents. Approval of intergovernmental subrecipient agreement, amendment number three, with Hoodland Senior Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents aged 60 and over. Approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement, amendment number three, with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Milwaukee Center, to provide social services for Clackamas County residents aged 60 and over. Approval of amendment number one to the work plan intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to administer emergency housing assistance expansion funds. Approval of a professional technical and personal services contract with Cascadia Behavioral Health to provide flexible funding services. Approval of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuum of Care Planning Grant Amendment for planning activities. Authorization to sign grant award documents with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for continuum of care program funds. Approval of construction contract between Clackamas County and PCR, Inc., for the Jennings Lodge Pedestrian Improvement Project. Approval of a grant agreement with Public Health Acceleration, Accreditation Board for the Public Health National Center for Innovations. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for the community paramedic opioid overdose response. Approval of amendment number 11 for the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority, for operation as the local public health authority for Clackamas County. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, a resolution supporting the transportation and growth management grant for a Clackamas County Transit Development Plan. Approval of a contract with Eagle Elsner, Inc., for the Canby Paving Package. And approval of a contract with Capital Asset and Paving Services for pavement ratings. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Technology Services, approval of a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Sunbreak Electronics. Under County Council, a designation of newspaper for the 2018 Property Tax Foreclosure Publication. Under the Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Gladstone for youth work crews for the Project Payback Program. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with multiple cities, Canby, Estacada, Happy Valley, Lake Oswego, Molalla, Oregon City, and West Lynn for diversion panel services for at-risk youth. Approval of amendment number eight to the intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for secure custody detention beds for juvenile offenders. Under Human Resources, approval of a labor contract between Clackamas County and the Clackamas County Peace Officers Association. And under the Development Agency, approval of a Second Amendment to the Disposition Agreement with Clackamas Corporate Park. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners want to remove or pull mine from the consent agenda? And I have Commissioner Fisher has the light on.
So I don't want to remove anything, I just want to highlight something that Commissioner Schrader worked pretty hard on at the legislature, and that is kind of a big deal. And we didn't really talk about it during our budget deliberation, so I just want to highlight the homelessness services. Now I lost the page, I think it's $782,000 that was allocated for emergency, for helping people who are homeless transition them. This is going to make a dent in really helping some of our very most vulnerable folks, which really paved the way for our general fund investments, being able to look at actually providing gap funding for units. So this is a big deal, hats off to Commissioner Schrader and to all the work that we do in Salem in securing these very important dollars.
Great, thanks. Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to just speak to item number eight, which was the Jennings Lodge project. This is something that, three years ago already, we got an approval for some STIP monies or MTTIP monies for this project. And it's always nice when the unincorporated area gets something, and especially in this area, Jennings Lodge was, I think, might have seen its first grant that I know of, at least I know of as being a Commissioner. So it's, which is really great. And it really provides really a vital, safe sidewalk link on a street that actually has three school districts, which is the North Clackamas School District, the Gladstone School District, and the Oregon City School District, all which go up and down that road. And there's not a sidewalk on that road anywhere, and yet there are schools there. And unfortunately, a fatal accident had happened years ago, a young child was, was killed on Jennings Avenue. So nice to see this project start to move forward. Karen's sitting there in the back, she's very familiar with this project, so I appreciate the staff's good work. And I just want to just, just acknowledge that today.
Great. Commissioner Schrader?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Fisher, that was really kind of you. I really appreciate that. And I just want to say, it really has always been a team effort. And I know that you continue as well with your influence to help us get the dollars we need from the Salem arena. And I just wanted to mention, we have an opportunity with the Association of Oregon Counties and the League of Oregon Cities, they continue to work with the Oregon community housing folks in Salem. Sorry, I'm hoarse today, I'm suffering from allergies, wow. In any case, we're working on a county solutions program together statewide that's doing an assessment, not only for our county here, but statewide assessments to see what the real needs are in housing across the state. And to my knowledge, it's, League of Oregon Cities and the Association of Oregon Counties have always worked together, but this is really a project that I think is going to set the stage for further collaboration statewide. And I'm very proud of the fact, and I hope our constituents are proud of the fact, that in the end, it was our county with our folks, with our participation in the association that basically allows these kinds of programs to move forward and happen. So it's not only us, but it's, we're influencing everybody. It's great. Thank you.
Great. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a county administrator updates.
Thanks, I've just got a couple of items to share with you. One is, I'm happy to relay to you all that next Thursday, June 14th, Clackamas County Dog Services is hosting its first-ever open doghouse, I mean, open house.
Are you going to be in the doghouse?
I'll be there, yes. I may, I may bring our little chocolate lab around to come visit with us too. I don't know if that's welcome or not, I'll find out. But anyway, this is an opportunity for the members of the public to tour the facilities, to meet the staff, and discover all the wonderful things that our Dog Services program does here in the community. The facility is located in the Clackamas area, and the division cares for more than 1,000 dogs a year. Somebody at some point will probably ask the question, "Who let the dogs out?" But they're, the services include investigating complaints, offering free microchipping for licensed dogs at our monthly clinics. And I want to just say, everyone is invited to this event. It starts at 5:30, again, Thursday, June 14th, and more information can be found at I also have more accolades for our permitting folks in our Transportation and Development Department. We had a customer and a homeowner, Moricia, recently emailed a compliment about one of our building codes inspectors, Mr. Robert Fix. And Moricia said, "This email is a commendation for Site Inspector Robert Fix. Not only was Mr. Fix professional, thorough, and efficient, he was sensitive to time issues. So often, this time issue is totally overlooked. As the owners of a home, we are often giving up wages to be present for the inspection and follow-up procedures. Please acknowledge Robert Fix for this excellent service." And so I wanted to thank Moricia for sharing this note with us, and special thanks to Robert for demonstrating excellent service, which of course is a cornerstone of our core values. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, first up is Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, well, it's been a long week of budget, I think eight days of doing budget, so it's nice to get that somewhat behind us. Did some great work there in getting a, some, some money committed towards housing and some, was having some flexibility to address things like retaining people in the current homes they have, perhaps land purchases and so forth. But I want to acknowledge staff's good work in trying to get those measurable outcomes and guiding principles embedded in there, and more work to come as, as we help shape that in the months to come. Also, we were able to get some money towards jail beds to open up eventually, not all the money, but a path towards that. So a little bit of opportunity for search and rescue to help me close their funding gap maybe for a location, and also some money for children of incarcerated parents, which is another great step. Hopefully, we can sustain all those things in the future. I was, you know, just still trying to get back to normal after, number one, the election and budget. And I just want to tell people out there, I've got, I am so far behind on emails. And I've been getting home every night late. Last night, I was up libraries, the night before, I was out in West Lynn on transportation, and then following that, another meeting I had on, on a local housing issue. So every night, it's just been slammed, it's amazing. June 9th, I'm going to do the best, I think on Saturday, I had a friend of mine pass away, so I have a celebration of life to go to, I've got an event to go to in Sandy, my mother-in-law's birthday, she's turning 80. Not on May 4th, though, but I'm, so just a lot of things happening. And a dinner afterwards that evening that some of us will be at, so just a very, very busy time. So I'm doing my best to catch up on some, on some of those, some of those things. But I did want to acknowledge that last night, I want to do some more research on it, but that was a news clip, I don't know what channel it was, I don't know if it was K2 News, but there was a thing on, something about potholeandia? I don't know if anyone caught that? Anyone catch that?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, so I want to get, if we can, maybe get some more information on that. But, you know, I know that's come, comes up, but we have a, and I, shame on me for not having the hotline, but maybe while I'm talking, Mary can put the hotline up on the screen. But if there are, if anyone sees a pothole, and we don't know if it's a state, state road, or it's a city road, or a county road, or a local road, but if you see a pothole, call our hotline. I know that we've gone, we have gotten many accolades for how quickly our staff have gone out there and DTD and responded on, on, on those potholes. If it's not our road, we'll, we'll help reach out to the state or whoever's jurisdiction it may be. But we do have a hotline. And if nothing else, after I'm done speaking here, Mary will have it up on the screen for our viewers to watch, and maybe the chair can highlight that at the end of the presentation. But I just want to thank the Budget Committee members, going back to Budget, Budget Committee members for all their good work and dedication. You know, some of those, or at least one of those, I know, know for certain has a business and, and taking time away from his business year after year to spend a week with us or more doing budgets is a sacrifice that, that they make or anyone makes as a member of the public. So a lot of good work and never happy, I guess, or perfectly happy, I am anyhow with the budget. Always, we're making advances all the time, and it never gets exactly perfect, but I don't think we ever do get it perfect, so I've got to acknowledge that. So I don't see it as, as half-full or half-empty, but just a work in progress. So I'm going to, again, applaud staff here for all their good work in putting together and responding to our requests. So it was, it was productive and it was cooperative, and I think we, just a lot of good, good work, good discussion. That's what I have for today, Chair.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Commissioner Savis is talking about, about budget, I think that's forefront in all of our minds since we've been living and breathing budget. What I so appreciate about our budget process is that there are contingencies and reserves, and we are financially healthy, we have carryovers from the previous year, we don't, we're not living on the edge in Clackamas County when it comes to our budgeting, we're planful, methodical. I just love performance Clackamas and that we have measures that we, as a budget committee, we get to look into, not the light items of how many pencils are we purchasing, but are we achieving the goals that we see as important? And it's interesting, engaging, and I just think hats off to those who were before me, which there are three Commissioners to my left, which are Martha Schrader, Paul Savison, Jim Bernard, that helped establish this process. And I think Ken and I say thank you for that, because it makes it a lot easier for us to have such good fiscal responsibility. We don't have to fight that battle. And as we all know, and working with our colleagues around the state and other counties, it's not easy out there in public sector and public budgeting. So we have a real gift here in Clackamas County. So thank you, Administrator Crepp.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Schrader?
Well, yes, budget. Actually, budget, budget. I kept my budget book, by the way, because I'm going to keep it throughout the years. I remember what we did and how we've managed things. And in particular, I want to thank folks for, and Commissioner Bernard in particular, for the children of incarcerated parents for bringing that up. That is a legacy program that we started a number of years ago when Debbie Marston, who was a dear friend of mine, was alive and came into my office and said, "Yeah, you have to do this." And my joke with Debbie was, you always did what Debbie said. So we got together with Rod Cook, we figured out how to get the money, and we have the folks who've been volunteering for years in what I perceive to be a very unique and special program. So thank you for that. I think that they do a wonderful job. It's a heartfelt program, it does wonderful things for children who are under duress because they have, you know, family members that just aren't there, moms, dads, and the impact it has on them is pretty significant. So just want to point that out and thank everybody for that. Also, I want to thank folks because, you know, I always remind people, I'm going to look at Dawn here, are we a $1.2 billion budget or 1.3? 1.2 billion dollar budget? What is it?
1.17, yes.
1.17, okay, we rounded up a little, but there we go. I always say we're, I'm going to round it up, say we're about a $1.2 billion budget in not only our local economies here in our region, but also in a global economy. And thanks for having Commissioners that were holding down the fort. I had had an opportunity to go on another trade mission for two weeks to China, where I was with government representatives from Malaysia, Indonesia, Tasmania, Vietnam, Cambodia, Kenya, the Philippines, and Germany. And what that was about was looking at their consortium of Asian countries and also, as I said, European countries with Germany there, and the global, the global force that China is becoming in our, in our global economies. And my notion is that we, we have a very robust trade initiative in this county. We were, we were absolutely instrumental in adding over $200 million to our economy by changing a rule, by working to change a rule at the, at the federal level with the Department of Agriculture, so we can now export not only fresh produce, berries, things of that sort, but also frozen items. So we continue to work on that. We can no longer work in isolation, not as a nation, not as a state. And we are paving the way as a county to, to really let everybody know we are part of a larger and bigger picture with that. So I will prepare a total report on that with photographs and specifics for my colleagues so you can see, and we'll work with Catherine to get the specific outcomes and what this is going to open up for us. I have some ideas. Also, my heart goes out to Secretary of State Richardson. I've worked with him on numerous occasions, I served with him on general government ways and means back in the legislative... occasions, I served with him on general government ways and means back in the legislature, has always been an officer and a gentleman with me in the true sense, and I'm honored, because he is ill, he has not been able, he was going to be speaking Saturday at the Voice of Three Nations, which is Japan, China, and Korea, they do a larger musical event, bringing our Asian-American folks together, and I, I am honored to be, to have been asked to be the replacement speaker for that event, because he cannot attend because of his health reasons. So I want to thank him for all his service, and we're going to miss him at this event, he's been a real champion of these kinds of issues. Trying to think what else I have here, I do want to comment, I'm sorry I'm going on, but I think this is very important. So I had an opportunity to go to Karen Powers' campaign kickoff the other day, and I'm gonna editorial, editorialize a little bit, those young women, you know, the thirty-somethings, they, they're just man, they're just taking over the world, and it was really interesting to me, they have pushed back, they bring their children to the floor of the House and the Senate, when they work with colleagues who might be a little older, gentlemen, when they kind of feel like they're getting patted on the head and say, "Well, no, little girl, you have a baby, you can't, yeah, we'll just go ahead without you," they, oh, that's true, they push back like nothing I've ever seen, and I am so proud of them.
Good for them.
But, but, I mean, really, seriously, man, I don't want to get in their way, they'll just mow you down, and I'm like, good for them that we have finally come to this point. However, I also had a chance to talk to one of the grandmothers there, who was a professor, and she told me, well, she keeps getting dinged, because she has elderly parents in New York, every time her mother has an incident, you know, she has failing health, she's afraid she's gonna die at some point, so she prioritizes that, and so she immediately just, and she has gotten grief from her institution, because, well, who's gonna teach you, who's gonna do this and that, and she goes, "I'm, I'm a caretaker, I'm a grand, you know, I'm a mother, I said, I'm a daughter, I said, this is what I do." And so what I want to say to the young women, it still happens to us as grandmothers, when I had family issues, I had to be away, because I was really worried, extremely worried about my daughter. So what did I do? I pushed back, I made sure I had my electronics with me, I made sure I got on FaceTime, I made sure that I attended every meetings, I've been told that, well, it's more than attending meetings, I know that, but I think that, that my message to those young women is, remember, once a caregiver, always a caregiver, it will never stop for you, and you are well on your way for pushing back to say, "No, we can do it, okay? We can do it, we can have it all, we can raise our children, we can continue to be good grandparents and good caregivers even into this stage of life, because I'll be sixty-five this year," and I'm here to remind them, it will, it never stops, you will always, always be in that commission, always be in that position, one way or the other. So let me go to our word of the week, because I'm, okay, Mary? Gregarious, it's an adjective, outgoing, cordial, or friendly. Did you know gregarious people enjoy the company of others? It was first used in the middle sixteen-sixties. Beth was very gregarious to all of the people that came out to celebrate the library's anniversary. Thank you, Kevin, for pulling that up for me this week. Arts and culture activities in the county. Sandy Actors Theater presents the Cemetery Club with Y East Artisans Guild's That's Life exhibit. This is a comedy with three Jewish widows, they meet monthly for tea before visiting their husbands' graves. Widower Sam enters and these friends find courage to move into the future while honoring the past. For the duration of the play, Y East Artisans Guild is exhibiting That's Life, featuring the artwork of Lozian Young, or Lois Ann, perhaps, Young in the lobby of the theater Friday and Saturday, June eighth and ninth, and Sunday, June tenth, 3:00 PM at the Sandy Actors Theater. Arts Council of Lake Oswego, Fourth Annual Chronicle, Plain Air Paintout. Residents and visitors are invited to join this citywide event in its fourth year. Local and regional artists will be painting outdoor landscapes while onlookers witness land covenants transform into scenes capturing the beauty of Lake Oswego. Lusher Farm, Foothills Park, George Rogers Park, Roar Park, Sundalee Plaza, Millennium Plaza, Lakeview Village, and Merrill Hurst University. Artwork will be on view later this month at 510 Museum and Art Space. That's Friday, June eighth through tenth, sunrise, sunset locations throughout Lake Oswego. So for more information about that, artsalliance.com, oh, excuse me, clackamasartsalliance.org, go ahead and look it up, and so, and Commissioner Fisher, what's Kirk?
Yeah, so I, I just want to mention, this is a very special event that's happening this weekend with Stump Town Stages in collaboration with Merrill Hurst University, which is why it is so special. The music conductor there with the choir is collaborating on an incredible event, Leonard Bernstein's Mass, Kirk actually sang with the person that's putting this all together here at Merrill Hurst for the Pope back over twenty years ago, so they brought the talent that they had many years ago, and there's a lot of local talent, it's an incredible piece, Leonard Bernstein wrote West Side Story, so this is a very interesting, very challenging, very provocative piece that a lot of folks might not know about here, but it's probably, might be one of the last things that Merrill Hurst University Choir does, and Merrill Hurst University has an amazing music program, so I really, it's very sad with the thought of Merrill Hurst closing, and I just want to encourage people, if they are so inclined, it is this weekend on Saturday evening and Sunday afternoon.
Done.
So I just wanted to, before we finish up, Mary's put up on the board here the phone number for the pothole hotline that Commissioner Savis had mentioned, just want to make sure people get the number, 503-557-6391, or www.clackamas.us/roads.
And as I say at the shopping channel, the lines are lighting up now.
Yes.
I assume we're talking about holes in the road, not pot or marijuana?
That's correct, we are, yes, yeah, yeah.
Wasn't sure. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started on some of the more personal things, I'd like to piggyback on a couple of things that Commissioner Schrader mentioned. Going backwards, on elder care, 25% of the caregivers that are taking care of elderly in private homes as well as in institutional settings are relatively newly arrived immigrants, and in 2005, that was only 20%, and the, the forecast is that that percentage of immigrant population that will be doing that kind of low-wage work will increase. So the consequences of restriction on immigration will be devastating to the elder care programs in this country. We all need to be aware of that, either because we have elderly parents that are, that need the care, or it's going to be us sooner or later, and there are few Americans, native-born Americans, that are interested in doing that work, quite frankly. So think about that when we talk about immigration issues, it's important. On the trade issue, sometimes I think people wonder why we spend the time, Martha and I both, particularly on, on trade issues with China and other countries. Oregon has a $3 billion trade surplus. That is because of the relationships we have in these other countries. And just to give you one corporate example of what these relationships mean, while Nike's manufacturing facilities are overseas, those facilities and the sales that Nike does support 13,000 jobs in Oregon alone, and an additional 33, or a total of 33,000 jobs nationwide. So those relationships internationally are critical, and the development, the, the time and efforts that we spend in working on those things mean jobs for our citizens right here in the United States. Moving on from that, like many here at the dais, we participated in Memorial Day celebrations, I personally went to the Oregon City Cemetery for the celebrations there, others I think went to other locations in remembrance of those who serve, have served this country and paid the ultimate price. All of us attended the Community Impact Awards last week, which is an acknowledgement of both businesses and individuals who, who give service to those that are less fortunate in our community. Attended the CCBA, the Clackamas County Business Alliance Forum with Representative Schrader, and also his Jobs Through Trade Forum at the Green, at Greenbrier Headquarters in Lake Oswego, and that's one of the reasons I brought up the statistics about international trade and how important that is to jobs. Commissioner Savis and I attended the De Jardin Hall groundbreaking at Clackamas Community College, and just a reminder, folks, about four years ago, we passed a bond issue to do major construction and improvement in the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics aspects of Clackamas Community College. So the, the Harmony Campus is already online, there's a industrial and tech center online on the Oregon City Campus, the De Jardin Hall is going to be, be expanded, built, and it's going to be focusing on, a lot on the life sciences, so we're really seeing an incredible effort on the part of both the community who passed these bonds, as well as the college itself, to prepare our students for the 21st century jobs that are coming up. And finally, I went to the Oak Lodge Meeting on History and Preservation with Commissioner Savis the other night, and learned more about the, the early history of Clackamas County and the Oak Lodge Jennings Lodge area, that was quite interesting. On a most personal note, this week, my first grandson graduated from high school, and I got to go.
Congratulations.
So, that's all I have, except the dog.
The dog?
I was there. And when it comes up. Here we go. This is Opie, small and smart, tiny and tremendous, excitable and intelligent, he's all that wrapped up in a tiny bundle of doggy delight. He is an active young fellow who would fit well with people who know and love mini pins. A good fit would be with an active family with kids thirteen years of age or older. He likes being outdoors, come see him soon to start the adoption process. For more information about Opie and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, I'm just gonna be quick, because I'm glad that we got through the budget, it was, you know, I, I always say that it's easy when you have no money, it's harder when you have money, because, and thankfully, we're doing well, I think we're very conservative, and our reserves and contingencies are as high as our goal had set. We have potential money coming from Comcast, back in 2009, they sued refusing to pay property tax on their facilities, and it was just resolved in court, this is 2018, so nine years later. Even when I was mayor, I would receive a check from Comcast, and I'd thank them very much, and then they'd tell you, "Don't cash this, because we're in court." Now, I think we did cash it, I'd have to ask, but that was a long time ago. So we're gonna get some money from them, which I think we should apply towards PERS, but, you know, it's also, we're reaching out to our rural communities that don't have internet, there might be an opportunity to use some of that money from Comcast to, to get internet service to some of those areas that are not being supplied service through other providers. But we also looked at our marijuana money, and how, which we've gotten approximately 1.2 million, and how we can enforce the code, code violations, and various, you know, when there's a violation, we have developed with the help of the sheriff and the DA's office and code enforcement, a way to kind of process safely those issues, because I think safety is key. But I hope that, I noticed that the OLCC is, stopped processing applications until they get caught up. I frankly wish they would just stop processing applications, because there's a lot of marijuana out there, 80% is what I heard is leaving the state, that's plain wrong, whatever happened to Seed, they were gonna track-
Seed to sale.
Seed to sale, whatever happened to that? It's just not happening, and I hope that they get this in line. In California, there are, and in Oregon, there are counties that, actually, there was recently a county voted to allow marijuana, that originally the county had denied marijuana, but they kept it outside the cities, but within the urban growth boundary of the cities. That's gonna be a fun challenge figuring that one out. And Ken, did you want to add something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had an announcement.
Oh, okay.
The ham radio operators who provide us emergency services in, in, when things get really, really bad, are going to have one of their practice activities in West Lynn at the top of the hill in the park in West Lynn on June 23rd and June 24th. So if you really would like to see how these guys operate all of this equipment and can contact other counties and other states, and quite frankly, other countries all over the world, I'd encourage you to stop by and take a look at it.
Great, speaking of ham, how are your pigs doing? You told me you had to chase them around the other day.
They're very fast.
That's the objective.
I have been building a barn in this new area, and yesterday was the first time I let the cows into this area, and I was squeezed a little bit, but anyway, I wish you all a great weekend, and glad the budget's behind us, and thank you, thank you for all your work and staff work, and we had, by the way, some citizen participation, I really, this was probably one of the more, the larger group of citizen participation we, we'd had, except maybe a number of years ago. We had a pretty large group a number of years ago, but I appreciate citizen participation, and one of those groups actually was successful, actually in Mutton, a lot of those groups were successful, but the incarcerated parents, one did achieve their goal, and NAMI, which is, was also there, they, you know, they just asked us to continue helping them, and that's happening, so. And Don, and your staff, thank you, and our staff for giving us some materials and answering questions as we went along, so with that, have a great weekend, we're adjourned.